All right, I'll go ahead and call this meeting to just past 6:30 on the 8th of January. It's a regular school board meeting here at the base school. First, looking for a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any changes, adjustments to the agenda?
Um.
I'll bring them up. A couple of things that I just want to point out, I'd like to move item number six, the finance committee down in the agenda to just below number 12 to allow Cheryl a little bit more time to update some slides that she's going to present. Um, and also, just before public comment at the end, I would like to have a quick board discussion regarding, um, school board, uh, expected vacancies and just a quick discussion about how we might be able to advertise for those vacancies. So is there anything else?
The policy should be pro- one.
Okay, that's correct. Um, number eight, policies not to adopt but to warn those policies. Also, I believe, under the finance committee, which we're moving to the end, we also have to improve warrants.
Yes.
So just a few corrections there. Hearing nothing further, all those in favor approving the agenda with those modifications, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, looking for a motion to approve the minutes from December 11th.
So moved.
Second.
Corrections or discussion of those minutes? Hearing nothing, all those in favor of approving, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, public comment, we'll start with our in-person audience, the public comment here in person. All right, next moving to our virtual audience, is there anyone online who has a public comment? All right, I don't see anyone. Next, we have, I'm PK, Universal Pre-K. And I'll hand it over to Chris Benway for introductions.
That's great. So I have with me this evening, our Universal Preschool Early Childhood Special Education Team. And I want to have this opportunity to introduce them to you, and then we're gonna share a brief presentation with you. So first, we have Sarah Mason. And Sarah, um, is the teacher at the site in Castleton. And, uh, then we have, um, God, I'm so sorry. Katie Hart, uh, Katie Hart is at Fairhaven Grace School as our teacher there. And then we have Laura Daly. Laura is at Benson Village School at our preschool site there. And, um, the ladies are gonna join me in a presentation, but this year is actually the 10th anniversary of the Universal Preschool Bill Act 166 that was passed back in 2014. And some of you may recall that last year, there was a very, um, huge early childhood legislation that was passed, one of the largest early childhood education bills with some pretty sweeping implications that will see rolled out over the next few years, some of them still to be determined. Uh, but the universal preschool, um, it was enacted in 2014, Act 166, um, required that all students provide at least 10 hours of publicly funded universal preschool to three-year-olds and four-year-olds. And so, that's what we want to talk to you a little bit about tonight, is the program that we're currently offering. So, you can go ahead and adjust the slide. As I said, uh, we are in our, um, 10th year of universal preschool. And we've had some ebbs and flows in our population over the last couple of years. Um, but when we first started with UPK about 10 years ago, we were getting about 30% of our students of the age level. And, uh, we saw some changes during the period of COVID, um, in the COVID restrictions, where we saw some decline of the population. But this past year also, maybe as a result of COVID, we've seen some increases in the population as well. Just three and a half, four years out, we're starting, we started to, um, uh, register those students, enroll those students out last year. So we do have a bit of a population bubble as you look at the last three-year average. Uh, we could advance to the next slide.
This is just a layout of the three different programs of the sites. So each, each section, we have two, two sections of each program. And one is three days a week, and there's two, and the times are adjusted to meet ten hours.
Hi, my class, 166.
We've done different configurations of the program times. Um, and there are times when some sections are, uh, more purely three-year-olds and some sections that may be more purely four-year-olds. And then sometimes where we have some combined sections of three and four-year-olds. Um, but we've tried to come up with times, um, that were not identical in every building so that we can overlap our staff. So, a couple of our staff serve as early childhood specialized patient managers, as well as universal preschool teachers. So that gives us the ability, if we need to support more in one program, we can go over during certain times, um, and support in the other program. And the next slide.
So this is just a slide with all the pictures from our different sites, obviously before a day of play. That's pretty tidy. Um, currently, Fairhaven serves 27 children, Appleton, we have 22, and Benson has 19.
And our partnership programs, in addition to those three, you can, yes, the next slide. In addition to the three, um, sites that we offer here in our districts, we also have nine partnership programs that run throughout Portland and Addison County. In prior years, we have, have, have had upwards of 12 or 13 partnership programs. That changes each year based on the population of students and where they might be attending. Some of our students are attending full-day partnership preschools. Um, some of them are attending just 10 hours a week. We only pay for the 10 hours a week to folks who are attending a full-time preschool opportunity. Um, but the number does change from year to year, just based on where students are enrolled. If we find out that a student is enrolled in a, in a particular program and they need the eligibility, then we'll initiate, uh, a program contract with them. So that, so those students and their families can benefit from that 10 hours of universal. The next slide speaks a little bit about our curriculum.
So, um, each of our programs, um, has put in line with the Vermont Early Learning Standards vows. Um, but we use kind of a variety of programs to meet some of those needs and engage children in different activities. Um, our main focus is really just getting them familiar with our buildings and sort of preparing them for that kindergarten transition. Um, getting them to practice some of the things that they will do when they go to kindergarten. Um, and generally just being used to being in a community of other learners, um, being with peers. Some of the specific ones that we use, um, we use a social emotional program called Second Step. Uh, we have the Bridges Math Program as well. Um, but it's kind of woven in, um, here and there, um, with some more recent changes with regard to the science of reading, we're trying to really align with what the primary teams are working on. And then also, uh, we have a phonological awareness program that we use as well, uh, which looks at, uh, rhyming and segmentating. And then one more, please.
Nice.
Um, and then those are some components of a typical day. Um, so our shorter day kids do not have lunch and our five-hour day kids do have lunch, but all of them participate in some free play. We do a morning meeting together, we have a snack or a breakfast. Um, we do some table activities or center time, um, and then we have outdoor time as well.
We have a couple I can hand out that Becky's gonna start it around, I think you have that. So Laura's gonna speak to one of them.
So typically, looking at this slide, a lot of people think, oh, this just looks like play in our classroom. Um, however, there are many different skills that we're looking at here that are enhancing learning. Um, working in the block area, looking at building, counting, um, you know, learning how to problem solve, all those things that children aren't learning as they're in the classroom. So, um, we like to hand this out to parents when they come in in the beginning and we like to explore and let them know that we are not just playing, we are learning through play.
You can skip to the next slide.
And then within that play, these are some of those skills that we're focusing and putting in on and working to prepare them for the upper grades, the fine motor, gross motor, communication, self-regulation, all the things that they need to, to continue to learn as they grow. And they are like little sponges, they just soak it all up at that age.
You can advance to the next slide. As they say, pictures say a thousand words, and you can see that, um, in all of the pictures, our students are really actively engaged. Um, during the COVID shutdown, we developed some at-home take-home kits and projects for parents to be able to work on with their kids in the absence of having been in, in school for some of that time. And, um, we try to revitalize those projects every year. They're great little kits that were developed and provide some great supplemental activities, um, for families to work on over breaks and over the summer. Um, and so it's just been a nice opportunity to be able to extend the learning. On the next slide, um, you can see some of the items that we purchased with the preschool RFSR funds. We had, uh, about $10,000, um, over the course of two years that we had the opportunity to spend in early childhood. And as with our, um, IDEA B larger fund grant, um, for the upper class, we wanted to be able to, um, utilize the money towards things that would not be a cost that would have to be sustained into future years. So to support our, uh, hands-on learning and outdoor experiential learning for our students, even for the smallest and youngest students, um, we purchased some new playground equipment, um, which really highlights, um, the nature and the outdoors. So there are a variety of, um, activities for the students to do. And we'll have some more that'll be put up, um, this spring, some musical, um, kind of like mini xylophone, um, music-making, um, experiences for our students. So try to, um, give them some introduction to the arts and water play and nature and, uh, just some great activities for our kids, uh, to be able to engage in. On the next slide, I promised you some numbers, and you can see, uh, some of the numbers, maybe, it's kind of tiny, but participation rates. But, um, over the last couple of years, um, you know, 21, 22, we were bringing in about 35% of our three-year-olds, 65% of our four-year-olds. Um, last year, about 50% of our three-year-olds, about 52% of our four-year-olds. This year, we have about 29% of our three-year-olds and about 71% um, of our four-year-olds that are participating in UPK programming, either on our site or in a partner preschool program. I mentioned earlier, coming legislation, um, if you want to flip to the next slide, thank you. Um, last year, um, was a huge preschool early childhood legislation that was passed, which includes some of your early childhood taxes that you see, um, around, uh, finance and things like that. Um, right now, some components of that early childhood bill are, uh, in appropriations, and they're starting to do some surveys at the state level about the anticipated and approximate cost of what it would mean to implement full-time preschool for four-year-olds across the state of Vermont. That is currently in the proposed legislation for F fly 27. And, um, so, uh, the reason I included these percentages, um, for the board to be thinking about is as we plan into the future, you can see we're getting 30%, 50%, 70%. If there is a movement towards full-day preschool for four-year-olds, I would anticipate you will see upwards of 95% of your students participating. Um, if parents and families are looking at paying for 37 and a half hours of childcare, daycare costs, or being able to access it for free, an early, high-quality early childhood program within the school, chances are they're gonna opt for that program within the school. The reason why we lose some of our students to private, um, preschool partnership programs is because we don't have a full-time program. Um, the things to think about as we, you know, explore, uh, the possibility of a four-year-old full-time program in the future would be costs that are associated with the actual programming, classroom teachers needing more space. Uh, but there are also other costs such as transportation. Um, and transportation, not just like the number of buses and the bus drivers, but when you're transporting young people that are age of three or four, they can't independently, uh, get on and off those buses. And so you need to have another adult on the bus as well. So just things that we're beginning to think about as we look at what, um, positive implications could result from having, uh, four-year-olds in school full-time. And also, as we would problem solve, how do we address the needs of three-year-olds? Um, and then where would the placement for them be other than in partner programs?
Chris, are they, are they transported with much older kids now?
Yeah, so we don't transport in our district. Our transportation policy speaks to transporting students that are ages five and older. And that date coincides with the entry age for kindergarten. So right now, unless it's a related service for an IEP and it's required as a specialized service in an IEP, we don't provide transportation for preschools.
But it sounds like we might expand to do that?
That would be something that we would have to decide as a district, whether that's something that we're gonna do or not. But it's one of the things that we certainly have to consider and certainly something that we would have to look at financially if we were to go to full-day, uh, programs for four-year-olds. Um, the next slide, so I would say stay tuned, watch your legislation, be talking to your legislators about, you know, as the preschool legislation is moving forward and we think about the implications it would have. I don't think that there's anybody that really opposes early childhood education and early intervention. It's, it's really great stuff. But we do need to look at, you know, as you're having a budget discussion in a few minutes, again, we need to look at what those, um, all those implications are. We wanted to give you a little bit of information about preschool screenings. Um, we offer them every year, they're open to all students in our, reside within our district. And Katie's gonna tell you a little bit about the developmental side.
So, we usually do them in the spring, um, March or April, and we have them at different days, at different sites, um, and try to make them available on different days of the week so that families can participate. Um, and it's really just an opportunity for parents and kids to come into our building, to meet teachers, to see our space. Um, we play, uh, the entire, um, uh, time is play-based, so we just do some different activities. We see what they know. Um, and then we have an opportunity to give, um, materials and suggestions for activities for home as we see needs. Um, and we can answer questions for families who have concerns. Um, we pull in specialists from time to time if parents have specific concerns about motor skills or speech and language skills that we're not able to answer. Um, and then it just kind of sets us up with that relationship right from the get-go and sort of helps us bring, bring everything.
She often tries to have a family food with a little go-bag of sorts with some early reader, uh, developmental information about like expected things for the different age ranges. So this, um, just sort of gives some introductory materials and resources to families as well. And then if you click to the last slide, um, what you can hear there is a little bit of information on our website. Um, again, back during COVID, um, these ladies worked really hard to develop activities and resources for kids and families. And, um, we have a link to a lot of those activities that are available on our website. And then the next slide is just the, uh, name and addresses and contact information for these, uh, ladies over here who do just a phenomenal job at introducing school to our younger, uh, population of learners. And we are certainly available to answer any questions.
I have one question. Um, in the pamphlet, it references five-star program, is that through the brighter futures rating system?
Building bright future. Yeah, um, in the five-star rating system, and that's going through some reworking right now. But all of our programs are five-star programs. And in the past, we've received, um, some supplemental, uh, grants, uh, for recognition awards, is what they are, um, for having met that criteria.
I have a couple of questions. The first, I, I think I know the answer, but others might not. I, I don't see Orwell listed in there. It's a home-based school.
Um, Orwell, we do not have a Slate Valley program at the Orwell site. Or the Orwell technical program, the preschool program that's offered in the downstairs of the Orwell School is actually a Mary Johnson's Children's Center program. And they're a partnership program for us, so we actually need tuition for our students to attend that program. But we don't own and operate that.
So it'd be cheaper to own and operate it, or about the same, or do we save money?
Uh, it totally depends on the number of students or hours, those kinds of things. Um, that the Mary Johnson program is a partnership program for us for 10 hours a week. They offer a full-day program there, so there are some students that participate, um, for a fee and, and stay for longer periods of time or come more frequently.
Do you think it's as good as our five-star programs?
Um, I am not the one who evaluates the programs, but they are evaluated based on that criteria, criteria through the stars recognition program. And so any of our partnership programs have to have four stars or have a plan, um, that's approved by the state as to how they're going to reach, uh, four stars if they don't have them already. So we can't partner with, do any public preschool partnerships with anybody that doesn't have at least four stars or a plan.
Well, I just want to say something about the Orwell program. It's, I, I think it's really nice, we get kids from other towns in it. Um, because it can be a full day if they want, being, because they offer the daycare, so you don't have to take your kid and take your kids someplace else.
Yeah.
And I think it's a very good program. Mary Johnson's a very well-known, um, daycare facility out of Middlebury.
And all nine of our partnership programs have to meet that stars recognition criteria and have to be pre-approved, pre-approved qualified providers. Um, and that's ascertained by the state of Vermont and the Agency of Education.
I just want to say, all four of my boys went through UPK or Triple E. And Maddie still talks about Mason, because he couldn't say Miss Mason, so it was always Mason. And my kids really, really, really benefited from that early hands-on classroom play. And I'm so happy that our district does it.
It's nice having a student in the school and being able to orient them to the buildings, the people, to the activities, the routines. I think it's a real added benefit for our students as they're entering kindergarten, to have that familiarity. And these folks often, we start usually a day or two later than the other students do at the beginning of school, so that these teachers can help support those students that are transitioning into kindergarten from the preschool, which is like, shows kids are coming in and they're seeing familiar faces as well.
And it's really nice, the classrooms that we had were very family-oriented. So younger siblings really got into, wow, this is what's happening, I really want to come. It was really nice how it was family.
Um, you mentioned IEP screenings, so our three- and four-year-olds, they're able to receive special ed services, there's like an official qualification and they pass through the gateways and they're, can you just expand upon that?
Universal, the universal screenings, we want to screen all the three, four, or five-year-olds that have been screened before, that's our goal. If there are any students that either, um, we recognize might have challenges, uh, within those areas that we screened for, uh, if parents, or if it's office kids, or sometimes students have received services through early intervention from birth to three providers, then we get information on them. Yes, we do conduct evaluations and new assessments for students that are three, four, and five, um, to see if they qualify for early childhood special education services. And then if they do, uh, we provide services through an IEP for those students that are eligible.
So you can be on an IEP as a three-year-old or a four-year-old?
Yes.
All, all four of my boys were, and it was a really easy transition. And they just screened them and they would put them in as soon as they turned three, because that's when they're eligible.
And that follows them to the elementary school?
If there's a student that we evaluate, um, and we reevaluate screenings as frequently as may be needed, but at least every three years, that IEP then develops in early childhood. Should the student remain eligible, we would continue to develop an IEP that would transition and be, um, aged, who aged IEP once they, uh, enter kindergarten?
504 as well?
504 as well, it was 504 accommodation plans to be able to access the environment or their education are also provided.
But the universal screening is for everybody, it's not about special ed.
Are for everybody.
Correct.
All students who participate that are ages three, four, or five, that are residents of Slate Valley that have not been screened before, we would love to have 100% participation.
Can I just, Chris, you're using the term student, but they don't actually have to be students, right? They're children in our district. I just want to make sure, because the public is.
Resident children.
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, yeah. Resident children. Anybody, we, we want everybody screened.
And the screening is a really, really nice opportunity for you to come and see the school's self and propose self-question, and put a child that put up needs for aid.
And you don't have to screen in the town in which you live. If you live in Benson, but it's more convenient to attend at the time that we're offering screenings at Castleton or at Fairhaven, you have the opportunity to go to any of those sites. Uh, the same with our preschool enrollment. Um, you know, as long as there is space available, we ask parents when they're filling out their registration paperwork, should you enroll in our program, what's your first choice, second choice, third choice? And we try to honor, uh, most students were able to honor their first choice or second choice at least, um, and have folks, uh, end up where they want to be. But we do have, uh, school choice within our district at the UPK level.
Universal screening statewide, right?
Yeah, it is recommended, yep, to be done, absolutely.
Do you think the parents are well aware?
We try to inform everybody, um, we do that through, uh, mailings when we know of folks. Um, we actually get the, through the, um, birth registries from the town offices, we follow up with those. We have some of the clerical staff in our buildings that are wonderful about, even if somebody comes in and they have a younger sibling and jot that name down, they ask them when their birthday was, so we can kind of keep them, um, in the loop on information. So we also share that information with doctor's office, it is, um, early childhood providers. We host businesses around town, um, grocery store, you know.
You have new lawn signs.
Yeah, we do have lawn signs.
T-shirt, t-shirt for us.
Yes, which we forgot to wear tonight. Next.
Tell your friends with the screening.
Are there any other questions? Well, thank you all for presenting tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, so as I'm, finance committee is gonna be bumped down the agenda, so we're on to the central office report, which was included in our packet. Does anyone have any questions for the administrators? I, I guess Chris Benway, where'd she go? She's over there. I just wanted to recognize what she had written about the IA, Functional Assistant Mentorship Program. I thought was, uh, pretty interesting and a worthwhile endeavor. So, well, thank you, Chris, on that one. Good idea. Anybody else comments or questions?
When, when is the winter symposium at the Woodstock?
Um, it's beginning of February, February 5th.
All right, anything else, central office report?
No, but thank you for writing it up. I might not have questions, but I enjoy reading it, so I appreciate it. I agree.
Um, number eight is policies to warn. There are four policies that we're gonna consider tonight, uh, being, uh, warned to potentially be adopted at a, at a future meeting. Um, Julie, are you gonna speak?
Yeah, I know, does Tony want to do it, Sheon?
Tony, do you want to speak to the policies?
Sure, I can do that. Um, the tobacco prohibition, we just changed a few of the things, like getting rid of the word supervisor reunion. And on that one, there were what they call adoption notes on our original one. That helps us to just, you know, where to go and what to do and what to leave out. You don't, we don't need that in our prohibition tobacco policy. In, uh, the D20 curriculum development and coordination, the last sentence in the first paragraph was added. It's, um, it talks about reviewing our K through 12 policy on a regular basis, our, our, um, curriculum. The personnel and recruitment, selection, appointment, and backgrounds, there was some new wording from the V S B A. I want to say it was in August, they had, they sent that out to us. Nothing major in that one either. And B22, public complaints about personnel, we just, it was just reorganized to make it easier to understand. But the rest of them are, there, we didn't, there was nothing really added. That was different. So I'd like to make. Um, I'd like to warn these policies for next time.
Second. Sorry.
That's okay, B seven, D twenty, B twenty, and B twenty-two.
Second. Anyone have any questions?
So I don't, I don't know if this question's in order, but. I'll throw it out there and you can rule on it. Um, is the feeling that we're in compliance with the curriculum development and coordination policy?
Um, well, we have a review PC reports of that annually, I believe in August, um. I, I think we are.
I don't, I don't remember that, this past August.
It was.
I think it was like September.
Oh, it might have been September, I can go back and look, but it was August or September.
Well, I'll look in a minute, but I, I don't remember that.
It was also part of our strategic plan, our um. Strategic plan update.
Yeah, I, I don't have the policy in front of me, but, I mean, a, approve is in that policy, correct? And it's in the statute as well.
Thank you.
Well, she'll be responsible for establishing. By either developing or assisting schools to develop it.
Yeah.
Establishing is kind of a, I think it's a synonym for approving.
Approving or improving? I, what did?
Approve, approving.
Okay.
Establishing.
Establishing.
I just, I don't know that we're doing that.
I, I believe it actually means that we need to have a curriculum.
Right.
That follows certain parameters of the state of Vermont.
Be the first.
Is put in place, which in our state, in my opinion, is a pretty short list. I swear, I've always. So the curriculum in one school can look different than a curriculum in another school, obviously. However, there are certain like, you know, you have to teach health at this level and certain components of health have to be. Have to be taught.
Well, you have to adhere to the education quality standards, right? And the curriculum needs to be represented about those.
Well, the idea that it would have to be spelled out that we have to have a curriculum. I mean, that would be, that would be obvious that we, we'd have to have a curriculum. That, I don't, I don't think we'd have a statute that would spell out something that obvious, or a policy that would spell out something that obvious. I mean, who would ever think that we wouldn't have to have a curriculum?
But we have gun policies and sexual harassment, I mean, that seems like obvious stuff too. But we have to have policies.
Yeah, but we don't just say, you know, we're going to have a gun policy and then not spell it out. I'm, I'm. You know.
Not what a policy is, a policy is just kind of. It's the big picture, that you will have something and you will implement procedures. And guidelines and. You know, put the meat to this. Whatever you're doing, so in this case, it would be the curriculum. But a policy isn't usually very specific. Procedures are.
Janice, did you have a question?
Uh, well, he just said we, and I was trying to define who we, like, was, was he referring to us as a board or us as a school district? But like, when, when you say we aren't doing it, you mean we as a board or we as a district? That's what I was trying.
Well, we as a board, and, well, let me ask, um, Brooke this. Um, why is it different now?
Yeah.
Than it was before we consolidated? Okay, the, the schools used to approve their curriculums.
High school.
What's that?
The high school used to.
Okay, the high school.
The, the elementary schools did not regularly, I think that's just the way the high school board always functioned. They functioned very differently than the elementary school boards.
Well, I can't call you on that because I only know about the high school.
Yeah.
But.
And I also checked regionally and the other, other school boards in the area don't either, so. And there was also Act one fifty-three. Um, that was two thousand and ten. With the consolidation of curriculum, I think it was two thousand and ten. Consolidation of curriculum, transportation, special ed. Services, I forget what else was in that, um, but I think it was two thousand and ten that changed. Kind of how a lot of that functioned, if there was any curriculum decisions that needed to be made that were. A, a lot of stuff had to occur at the SU level after two thousand and ten. Um, in some, in some boards had bylaws saying that there would be a curriculum committee. When we established the Slate Valley School District. Curriculum Committee was not a part of our bylaws, I mean, can the board revisit that and add that? Certainly if they wanted to, um, and I can certainly do a bigger survey on a statewide level as to see. What districts have curriculum committees, but in Rutland County, the ones that I asked do not.
Well, just, you know, Cheryl reports to a committee. And uh, Chris reports to a committee. And um, this is no disrespect to Casey at all. But I think he could, could report to a committee. And, and I think he does a wonderful job, I'm worried about the next guy. And I know Chris got upset when I used the word woke, but let me, let me use an example if I may. Let's say we had the next guy was all into sixteen nineteen and not at all into seventeen seventy-six. I guess that would be an example of what I was talking about that other time. Um. Well, this is about, it's not about Casey, but it's about the next person. And, and the idea that I think Casey could report.
Great, it's not a discussion right now, it's just a forum for you to ask a question about the policy to be warned, so if you could just kind of.
Okay, no, you're right, I'm done.
Can I just say something? Well, Casey reports to the board. So he may not report. Whatever, but he reports to the board. And remember, when we hire a new curriculum coordinator, we're going to be hiring them, so we're going to look for traits that we want. Not traits that they have or want.
Any other questions regarding uh any of these policies to be worn? And again, policy meetings are open to the public, right, or, or even though they might not be on that committee? Okay. Alright, all those in favor of, of approving to warn policies, B seven, D twenty, B twenty, and B twenty-two, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, next is building and grounds update. And um, I guess this is on the agenda because um, the Buildings and Grounds Committee met. Last December and we haven't had a board meeting since to update the board about what was discussed. I know Peter, who is the chair of that committee, was a little bit late in driving, so he's just asked me to kind of give a quick summary of what was discussed. Uh, what was discussed was the idea of potentially uh. Bonding our infrastructure needs in the future. Uh, Chris Cole presented to us a list of. Uh, maintenance and infrastructure repairs and improvements, he ranked them by priority level, one through. I'm not sure how many were on the list. And he had the uh anticipated or approximate cost of each of those. Items, um, the committee just discussed. You know, the messaging of the bond, the timing of the bond, whether to take a tiered approach. Meaning looking at the most essential items that needed uh. Improving or repair, or looking to bond the entire uh needs list of items. Um, so Brooke shared with, with the board via email just the other day. Some um anticipated or the potential for legislation to discuss in this current session. Uh, some infrastructure funding mechanisms. So we're certainly listening to how that develops over the next uh couple months. Um. I guess, Peter, am I missing any key points that you wanted to highlight?
No, I just think, I saw Brooke's email and, you know, I think we should still look at it, keep moving forward on it, doesn't mean that we have to do anything. But I don't think we should put it on hold or anything, I think we should just keep figuring out which direct, which way we want to go so that we're ready when we are ready. You know, I mean, and maybe it doesn't happen this year, but it'd be nice, you know, to get it figured out.
Yeah, I mean, no one can deny that there are pretty extensive infrastructure needs within the district. But the context and the landscape of, of education finances is always changing. And uh, you know, you have to certainly consider the timing of such a request and the politics involved. So I, I think the committee really agrees, I think, to, to focus on passing our budget first and, and see how the legislative session develops and. And um, if there's an opportunity to revisit the bond after the school budget vote, then I think we're gonna, we're gonna be ready to do that. So, Chris, thank you for putting in the time to get that uh information organized for us. Then any questions? Okay. Alright, the next item is an action item, FY twenty-five substitute pay. Uh, there was a memo in our packet. I believe it's. Probably Cheryl and Brooke who are recommending that. Our substitute pay. Uh, increase to eighteen dollars an hour. For FY twenty-five. And that is from what?
Sixteen fifty.
Sixteen fifty, so up to eighteen dollars an hour. We would need a motion to uh approve that.
No move.
Second.
Any questions about the substitute pay for FY twenty-five?
Would there be aides, significant numbers of aides that would be below that?
No, I, I made, I made sure that that doesn't occur. Think the lowest salary for aides is eighteen something. Next year, and then if they substitute for a teacher, they get additional compensation based on their contract as well, so. I'm always careful.
Any other questions? Alright, hearing nothing, all those in favor of approving substitute pay FY twenty-five from sixteen fifty to eighteen dollars an hour, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Alright, number eleven is FY twenty-five school choice. Number, and again, there was a memo attached. Statute stipulates that. Board has to take action. And the transfers. Out, right, these are transfer out. Transfers out can either be ten percent. Of your resident population or forty.
Yep.
Whichever is smaller. And ten percent of our resident population is thirty-three. Which is smaller than forty.
No move. Second.
Okay. Any questions on establishing that for FY twenty-five? School choice numbers.
How many do we have that are going out right now?
I know you're going to ask me, I don't know, I'm trying to remember. Um. It's twenty. I, I think it's twenty-something, I just trying to.
And those are to other secondary.
Primarily Rutland City and Middlebury.
Anyone else have a question while Brooke is looking for that information?
Well, school choice in.
I, I'll, I'll look that up because I don't, it fluctuates and so I want to make.
Probably will.
It's, it's single digits, I just. Oh, there it is, hold on. School choice out twenty-five, school choice in five, so.
So.
That's almost all secondary.
Yeah. Yeah.
Jess?
I, I just have, like, what happens if you're student number thirty-four? Like, how do you decide what thirty-three students are allowed to transfer out?
Um, if you have more by the deadline, then it's a lottery.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. So if you.
We've never had that.
I was gonna say, we've never.
Never run into that issue.
But like a lot of districts like Rutland and Middlebury. Have the opposite issue, so many students transferring in, that they do a lottery to decide who gets in, yep. So.
Okay.
And once you get accepted, you're in, so let's just say, for example, in your example, I mean. Of the thirty-three, thirty could be returning transfer outers, right? So there's only three new openings, right, for incoming freshmen?
Mm-hmm, yes. Yeah, and, and just so you know, our transfer in come from Polkney, Benning, and Bennington, Rutland, and we have one from Otter Valley, but.
Bennington?
Bennington, Rutland, so it's Pollitt in this case.
So quite a ways.
Yeah. So.
Right. I missed the motion.
Uh, Peter made.
Yeah, I can give it to you. That's the motion.
Alright, so I'll call the question, are there, are there any other questions before we go on this? Alright, so all those in favor of accepting the FY twenty-five school choice number recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, next is the FY twenty-five calendar. And uh, I guess Brooke will turn it over, do you, there's anything that you want to highlight?
Um, I, I think it's. It's pretty, pretty standard, I don't think there's anything that's dramatically different. From previous years, it does look like April vacation is later, but that's just because that's the third fall week. It just, it's the way the calendar um falls, but otherwise it's. Essentially the same as it usually is, there's, there's no changes, but just a reminder that. We have to do a regional calendar around Stafford Technical Center, so we agreed to a certain number. Of days regionally, we have to have a hundred and seventy-five common days, so I don't really have a lot um that I can change with this. You might be able to add some days on the front end or the back end, and but really, um. In the middle, we can't change a whole lot, so.
Looking for a motion to accept this calendar for FY twenty-five, no move?
Second.
Any questions or further discussion?
So, can I just ask a quick question, Brooke, I'm just, um, so during family teacher conferences. Um, you have an early release day. For the conferences, and then followed by a. Um, in-service day for teachers. Does it?
Well, but those, this year, we decide, like, right now, we. Allow the teachers on an early release day to use some of that early release day for parent conferences, but parent conferences also are occurring in the evenings as well. So um, so we're giving them two opportunities to do, to do that. Per, per the contracts, we have two rounds of um family conferences. You fall and spring, yeah.
And um, I'm just curious about um. If virtual conferences are something that are um supported.
Yes.
Through this as well.
Yes, I mean, the principals, I think, are all shaking their heads, but yeah.
I just know in my experience. The attendance for conferences went like this when virtual conferences became a thing. So I would hate to see that.
Yes, I believe we're still doing that across the board.
Any other questions? Alright, all those in favor of approving the FY twenty-five calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, let's see, um, so we were now going to, um, this is where Cheryl is with Finance Committee. Um, I guess, um. Why don't Glenn and I take care of the, the easy business first, and then you can get into the presentation, Cheryl, okay? So we got warrants and announced tuition.
Yes, so the first thing, um. I would be looking for a motion uh for this announce, the state says we have to set our announced tuition rates yearly. Um. For the twenty-four, uh, our past year, our tuition rates were sixteen thousand. for the twenty-four, uh, our past year, our tuition rates were sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars for grades K through six, seventeen thousand, five hundred for grades seven through twelve. That was again for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We, I would make a motion that we set our tuition rates for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year at seventeen thousand dollars for, for both elementary and secondary students. So that would be for K through twelve.
Second.
So any discussion, questions on that? Again, as Brooke just mentioned, we have five or so kids coming in, so the, these changes don't have a really significant financial impact. Hearing nothing further, all those in favor of approving announced tuition for FY25, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right.
Okay, now.
Just to clarify those, um, the school choice students and tuition students are two different percentages. They'll act like we have nine students coming in, four of which pay tuition and five are on school choice.
So next thing is, uh, we'll pay some bills. So I'll make a motion to approve accounts payable invoices, uh, in the amount of one million, fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents.
Second. Peter's got it.
Any questions on accounts payable? Hearing nothing, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve capital reserve expenses in the amount of three hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars and eighty-five cents.
Second.
Questions on capital reserve? Hearing nothing, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve food service expenses in the amount of one hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents.
Second.
Questions on food service?
Left you.
Hearing nothing, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve grant expenses in the amount of forty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety-five cents.
Second.
Questions on grants? Hearing nothing, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve high school student activity expenses in the amount of one thousand, four hundred and five dollars.
Second.
Questions on high school student activity? Hearing nothing, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And finally, I'll make a motion to approve elementary student activity expenses in the amount of nine hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-two cents.
Second.
Questions on elementary student activity? Hearing nothing, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, and now, um, you know, the Finance Committee did deliberate about the different, uh, some of the recent changes. It's mainly what we're going to be recommending to the board for FY25 budgets. And Cheryl's put together a presentation, um, looking through this, and this is really an opportunity for Cheryl to point out some key things and for board members, members of part of the regular board to just, um, ask questions. And the clarification.
Do you, Finance Committee, do you mind me handing out the kind of the scenario sheet that we've been working with? Start by saying that, so there's just one and then whatever's extra. Um, so, um, there's a lot been going on with Act one twenty-seven. I'll touch on some of that in my presentation, um, uh, in places where there's an impact on Slate Valley. Um, and, um, so we'll talk about that as we go along. So the sheet that's being cast out, uh, the top line, the expenditure budget of thirty-one million, twenty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars is the same in all the scenarios. So what the board has been considering is how much of the surplus that is available to the district uh, should be used in our revenue lines, uh, which then affects education spending, which then, um, rolls down to our tax rate. So I'll go through the, this presentation fairly quickly. It's similar to one, the, it's the same, similar one, um, that we've used in the past, and then we can come back, um, and talk about the, this scenario sheet. So this presentation reflects column number four. So on the sheet there, you use column number four with all the asterisks on it. So this presentation is reflective of those numbers. Um, and Brooke will start us off and then I'll take over.
So these are just our belief statements that, um, we start every presentation with. Nothing has changed with those, those are the ones we've had for years now. Points of pride, so the, these are some things that, um, are reflective of the, the budget. So universal meals, average class size, really, um, the new middle school design program and outdoor pursuits, the number of faculty and staff we employ, a lot of off-site work, um, learning opportunities. We're really trying to create more of those after-school programming, K through six throughout the district. Um, and then there's, you know, a bunch of extracurricular opportunities. All, all of those things are reflected in the budget, so. Our enrollment, um, numbers and the projected enrollment for next year, so pretty, um, stable um, from this year to next year is what is being projected. There's some variations between individual schools, but overall our enrollment is stable. Um, projected staffing changes, so this budget's reflective of some staffing changes, a reduction in a speech language pathologist. Um, this is a position that we, um, have in the budget currently that we have not been able to fill. Um, two technology integration positions, um, and then the addition of an elementary school teacher at Benson specifically due to the increase in enrollment there and class sizes, um, an additional middle school, um, high school teacher. Primarily this person, we believe, would be doing middle school. Um, are, we really need the addition of a specials area, um, teacher to, um, decrease the enroll, our class on, on some areas, so. Um, a school nurse for the middle school and high school, this was something that we budgeted with Esser funds this year. We have not been able to fill, but our nurses specifically with the size sizes at the middle and, um, in high school, it's been, um, challenging to support, um, all of the students with, with their needs currently. Um, district-wide, um, staff technology support. So we're, we're still supporting technology, but just in a, a different manner. Um, the addition of custodial position and, um, we have two-point-three positions that were, um, that are currently being funded with Esser monies and, um, SAP monies. Um, those are federal funds that we're anticipating going away. Esser, we know for sure is going away. The SAP position, um, is a competitive grant that we don't often, uh, we don't know that we'll, we'll get until sometimes May or June, and that grant supports our, um, substance abuse counselor. So that position is something that we really feel is critical. And so we have put that in the local budget. So overall, it's a addition of four-point-eight-five positions. If you go back over the last six years in this district, we have actually cut more than thirty positions overall in the district, so. Okay. So these were the primary objectives, um, in the budget, really those classroom teachers. Um, you know, we continue to see an increase in student behavior and mental health needs. Um, and also to add to that, um, and this is something that's not on that slide, but this year, um, we did, the data just came out last week that, um, our poverty rate within our district has increased dramatically. And we are now, um, fifth in the state for school districts with the highest poverty needs in the state of Vermont. So, um, we moved from eighth to fifth, so, um, so a bit, a big jump. So that would explain some of the trends in other areas we may be seeing as well, so, um.
How are we defining poverty? What are some of the metrics we're using?
KC, what are the, Medicaid.
The big one.
Direct certification of Medicaid is a big one.
And so when the state kind of edited the way they were going to capture, um, it really allowed us, it was more representative of the students that we probably have served for a number of years, but, um, there had been kind of a narrow way outside of, um, parents really letting us know that the state, um, would go in and, and track who would be considered, um, in poverty and who would be considered outside of poverty. And so as Brooke said, um, I think actually we were, we were maybe ninth and moved to fifth. And two of the districts that are ahead of us actually between last year and this year became quote-unquote wealthier. And so we're one of the few, one of only two that recognized a pretty significant, um, increase in those students that live in poverty, which had us moving, um, towards the top.
And of the top five districts in the state, um, Rutland City and Slate Valley are both from Rutland County, so.
So I've heard Medicaid, we don't use free and reduced lunch anymore, that's not a, a metric?
Right, there's other means in which we kind of gather that information.
Because it wasn't proving to be an effective metric because it was relying on parents to turn in paperwork that we were not receiving.
Right, and also with community eligibility, which is what we are on provision two.
We're less likely to allow paperwork, so when they change kind of the, the metrics that they use, they, and I wouldn't say they broadened it, but they used the other additional, thank you, to then determine, and so it became a bit more accurate, probably.
So our repositioning could have been because of the changed metrics?
I think it holds.
Could have been, yeah.
Um, and, and it's a percentage, so they look at, you know, the total district size and then how many of those students, um, you know, fit these different categories? And so, um, really recognizing some of those different categories. And that's why I was saying, it, it's probably been something that's true about this district for a few years.
So it's more accurate now, you think?
I think, and so it's telling, right, in terms of as Brooke identifies, educators, boom, classrooms identify some of the other needs of students that go along with food insecurity? Um, or, or lack of access to healthcare or how you get healthcare. I mean, there's a lot to that for a family in those dynamics. Um, and so when thinking about teaching and learning, kind of put things into perspective a bit.
It's one of those circumstances where you don't want to be number one.
I mean.
Right, I'm just thinking about it, like you keep saying, oh, we're five, but we do not want to be one, we want to be one hundred. Don't want to be one.
I just think it's a different way to package what you provide for families. I think it, um, when we talk about the importance of after-school care and Boys and Girls Club and provision, you know, universal meals, there's a lot that I think, um, keeps people going from day to day that the school system does outside of, um, not to get on the curriculum because that is very important. But I, I just think there's a lot that goes into supporting, um, the day-to-day that, that a school district does when you're in that upper tier. And, and not bad or indifferent, it's just, it's, it's.
Right.
It is.
Yep, um, and the budget also, um, reflects an increase into building, uh, into the, for building maintenance projects across.
Typo, that was a late change, so I, I just see, I spelled that wrong, we'll fix.
Okay. Save the T anyways, maintenance.
It's the main, the state of.
Sorry about that.
Next slide.
So, um, obvi- obviously, Act one twenty-seven, as we have been speaking about for months, um, was a benefit for our district. We are advantaged in that. And our long-term weighted, um, average daily membership that we moved to versus equalized pupils, we have gained, um, quite a bit in terms of student weights, um, which has been a benefit to our district. Um, some other, you know, considerations I spoke about in a couple of previous slides, you know, Esser pandemic relief funds going away. Thankfully, we did not invest a whole lot in positions with, with that money, um, as other districts might have done. Um, so we're in a pretty good, pretty good shape there, but there are a couple of positions that we do want to move to the local budget. Increase, um, in staff wages and benefits. Um, health insurance is going up statewide, um, sixteen-point-four percent. Remember, that's negotiated at the state, so we have no control over that. And, um, the addition of long-term disability and life insurance for our support staff. And there's a new childcare tax credit, um, that we pay, um, forty-four percent or point four-four percent is paid by the employer. I believe that's seventy thousand added to our budget roughly, um, as a result of that new legislation. And then there's increases in municipal retirement and workers' compensation. Um, again, you know, I already spoke about the increase in poverty, mental health and behavioral needs, and then our infrastructure needs across the district.
Is the Boys and Girls Club, what happened with that?
That's in the budget. Um, building maintenance, so this year, I mean, first you can speak to it if you want, but we, we've addressed, um, you know, done mid, or renovations to the middle, um, middle school to, uh, to additional classroom spaces or renovate the locker rooms. It gives us those additional classroom spaces and renovations to mechanical systems as well. And then the upcoming, upcoming years, year or years, these, these are all things that, um, we need to tackle. Um, some in the very short term, some more in the long term. But for an approximate cost of about eighteen million dollars in today's money. So the longer you wait, obviously, more likely it's going to cost more.
One slide of the high-level view, the Building Committee has been working on kind of the detailed list of ranking projects, one to whatever, one to fifty, one to whatever, or capital projects for local budget projects. So the committee did a lot of work on that the last four or five months.
So, moving on to the numbers, so, uh, thirty-one million, twenty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars, that's the amount that appears in green, uh, that top line. So that doesn't change, uh, in all the scenarios that the board was considering. So that's a ten-point-five-seven percent increase from FY24. And we've talked about previously, um, what is, um, what the components and the things that have driven that change. So, um, Act one twenty-seven, the big thing about Act one twenty-seven was that the weights used to determine the number of students changed. So previously, we were look, using something we referred to as equalized pupils. Um, and, but now we're using LTW ADM, which means Long-Term Weighted Average Daily Membership. So under Act one twenty-seven, the weights that were used in equalized pupils changed. Uh, they hadn't been updated in twenty years. And as a result, um, we had twelve-hundred equalized pupils. And now with long-term weighted ADM, um, and I've noted that is not final, but actually it's almost final. I got a number today at about four o'clock, um, from the AOE, which I updated here, I didn't update that, no. Um, so we think we're going to be coming in at two thousand, three hundred and fifty-five point four-three, uh, LTW ADM. And if you recall, I, it was either my August or my September, uh, central office report, I went in. I went into all the components of the weighting for that long-term, uh, weighted ADM. So you can see that Slate Valley has, um, compared to equalized pupils, we've almost, we've gained more than 1,000. And when, uh, when you compare, the, we took our FY '24 census numbers and ran them through the weights, uh, based on Act 127 because that sets some parameters that we have to deal with. Uh, we had 2,060, so in 2025, we've got 2,355. And so that's an increase. So that, um, is a significant benefit for us. Uh, next slide. So, um, this is the expenditure budget and it works our way down to education spending. I'm sorry, now I'll start coughing. Uh, education spending per LTW ADM. That being $11,384.63 under the scenario that the board is presenting tonight. You'll just give me a minute, sorry, that sounded a little. Um. The thing to note is that the tax commissioner, uh, in his letter, said that he expected the state average for, um, education spending for LTW ADM to come in at about 22,953. So you can see we're quite a bit below that at 11,384.
It's a big point right there. So one of the things we have to highlight with our voters is Slate Valley is half of what the average per pupil is in the state.
Maybe you could just highlight that, that in the slide.
Yep.
It's been right there.
It isn't much.
I got, get rid of the thing. I don't know how to get rid of it.
Make the whole, make the whole block like yellow.
Okay, alright.
So, this just gives you a comparison to FY '24. Um, so our long-term weighted ADM, uh, education spending is an, um, an increase from FY '24 when you use LTW ADM. It's an increase of $80, $86.34 per student. Open that slide, next one. Yep. That's one, so. Um. We use the LTW ADM per, uh, education spending for LTW ADM to determine the equalized tax rate. So that, under this scenario, would be, uh, about $1.20, a little over $1.20. That's using the property yield as recommended by the tax commissioner. So, this is the point. So the equalized, uh, tax rate is the same rate for every town. And it's at this point that each town's common level of appraisal is applied. Go to the next slide. So compared to FY '24, uh, the change in our equalized tax rate is a little over three cents. Or, uh, about 2.74%. And next slide. Um, so this shows you, uh, Slate Valley's equalized tax rate over the last 10 years. So the colorful lines, um, show the, uh, various towns before we merged. And then once we became Slate Valley, you can see that black line that, um, all, we all moved to, uh, having one equalized homestead tax rate for all the towns. And you can see how that has compared over the last few years to, um, our cap. A good illustration of what's been happening. So you can see there that Slate Valley's, uh, equalized homestead tax rate has been decreasing, um, the last, really since, I think FY 2021, it was pretty close, then 22, 23, 24 down. And then, uh, up a little bit in FY '25. And the next slide. So these are the common levels of appraisal. And really, I covered this extensively in the central office report, um, my report for this month in January. Um, the thing to, that's important about the common level appraisal and what it does in terms of the formula, it's taking into account, uh, recent sales and it's looking at, it looks at those sales compared to, um, the, um, town assessed values. And so this common level of appraisal is reflective of sales from April 1st of 2020 through March 31st of 2023. So the CLA is really now reflective of the pandemic and, uh, post-pandemic years entirely. And so if you go to the next slide, you can see what that's looked like, has looked like since '23, '24, and '25. You can see that dramatic, um, decrease in the CLAs, um, since those sales are really reflective of those years, um, uh, with the pandemic. And, um, all the towns in our district are now subject to a reappraisal. Um, we have one town, West Haven, hasn't reappraised since 2007. And the town with the most recent reappraisal is Hubbardton in 2016. But since, um, all these, uh, CLAs have dropped, um, if any CLAs below 85%, um, necessitate a reappraisal. So all our towns are now subject to a reappraisal.
Oral's in the middle of it.
Hmm.
Oral is in the middle of it. We're reappraising.
They're being replaced. Your last reappraisal was 2011.
Yeah, we're in the middle. I don't know how far along we are, but I know we're doing it now.
There were a couple of towns that last year fell below, um, the 85%, but now all our towns fall below. Um, let's see, last year, Castleton was below, Hubbardton was below, West Haven was below. Um.
Glenn had a good question at the last meeting.
Yep.
Would you get a reappraisal, does it, he said everything? Or is it just one year of the three years? So if you do a town-wide reappraisal, does that?
Your CLA is one number, it's just a number. So it.
But it's a three-year average.
Right, but it's a three-year average of the sales, so. I, well, I don't know if it resets all three years.
It's a rolling average.
Right, but like he's saying, do they really look at those, that three years that the CLA is based on and reevaluate all those sales over all the entire three years compared to what their new value is? That's what you're asking.
Yeah.
Honestly, I don't know. I can see if I can find out.
Because it would seem like if a town reappraised, then they should be, if it was done properly, they should be right around 100%.
Right.
And so that number, because otherwise, if you've got two years that are in the 70s and you reappraise to get you to 100%, if they do a three-year rolling average, you're going to be still below 90.
Right.
Yeah.
So it would almost seem like once you reappraised, it's almost like it should be, the, it should be, the, uh, clock should be reset, starting over from there and your previous couple of years' sales don't count. You go forward from that back. I think it was.
I know. Um, and so then finally, and these numbers appear, really, column four is, um, um, this presentation is the information that appears in column four of the sheet that I handed out. So if you can't see it there, um, if you go to the next slide. These, um, these figures appear in, at the bottom of this, um, legal size sheet that I handed out. So, um, what I did was I looked at what the estimated equalized tax rate would be under this fourth, uh, scenario, um, that we're presenting today, um, which would give us an estimated equalized tax rate of about $1.20. Then you apply each town's common level of appraisal to that and you get each town's, uh, homestead tax rate. So if we pull that apart and look at the amount of the increase, um, for each town that's attributable, attributable to the budget, that would be $32.17 because that's, that's the change in the equalized tax rate. So then if you look at the amount of the increase attributable to the CLA, you see, um, those, uh, numbers in the column, second in from the right, amount of increase attributable to CLA. You see the amount for each town. And then the combined is simply, uh, those two columns together. The amount of tax rate attributable to the budget and the amount of tax increase attributable to the CLA. So that's those figures that appear in the very bottom.
Cheryl?
Um, of the sheet, yes.
I don't think you've included it on this slide deck, but, um, I know normally you look at the, um, percentage of taxpayers within each community who pay based on property tax versus income sensitivity.
Yep.
Um. So that analysis will be forthcoming at some point, but.
I, I haven't gotten there. I mean, last year's, um, last year's is in here. I mean, on, and from year to year, honestly, it doesn't change a lot. Um, so, um, reading from the slide from last year, um, it was between 62 and 81%. 62, the low in one town, and 81% the high in another town. So, uh, all six of our towns range between 62 and 81% of taxpayers paying, that received a, a credit because they were paying based on income rather than based on the value of their, their home site.
I'm just trying to think of the community messaging here. So I want to talk to a taxpayer in Castleton whose house is 200,000 dollars. It's not, I can't, I can't really say that your property taxes are going to go up 520 bucks because in reality, they're probably receiving some degree of credit or they're completely, uh, based upon income and not property value. So I'm just trying to think about the messaging.
Right, um, we do, I have had a slide and that, that's one we can, will bring into the presentation and include. This, um, a bit of an abbreviated version of this, um, for tonight, trying to kind of thread the line between comments about what's too much, what's too little. Um, but I can add that to the list of.
I really do like the new color scheme.
Oh, thank you. We made that big change. Um, so the column four, and I'll let the, um, finance committee take over from here. The, what the board, um, would like to do is we have $900,000 of surplus to work with. And they would like to propose that we have an article on the warning that transfers 500,000 of that to our capital projects reserve and only uses 400,000 of that, um, towards the budget. So that's reflected in this presentation and in column four on the sheet that I handed out. Um, so it's important to note that, um, really, after we're done with, um, the projects that we're doing right now, we will really have nothing left in our capital projects reserve. Um, the latest renovation, um, to the middle school, um, really used up all the supplies and then some. And, um, you have five buildings that you're responsible for maintaining. And while we have increased the amount in the budget, um, for building maintenance projects, um, it will have about a million dollars, um, you need to keep in mind that's for maintaining five buildings and addressing, uh, significant maintenance needs. So it's not the day-to-day maintenance, it's the, the more significant projects, uh, that need to be undertaken. Um, and the 500,000 is for things that we don't necessarily have a plan, don't have a plan to use for right now, but as Chris has said, he's got a list of about $50 million worth of projects that need to be addressed at some point. And, um, you should have some money in a capital projects reserve for emergencies and those types of things.
Yeah, as Cheryl said, you know, we looked at the use of the surplus and do we just put all of it back into the budget to try to keep tax rates lower and really not address our looming, uh, infrastructure problems? Or do we try to take a kind of a conservative route? And what level do we want? And the finance committee unanimously agreed that if we put $500,000 of the surplus into a capital reserve and then use the additional, the other remaining 400,000 would go back into the budget as, um, revenue. That's where we want it to be. Um, you know, if a, if a boiler, if a boiler goes, you know, wraps out or something, it's going to eat up most of that so quick, if not all of it, um, in one of our buildings. Um, I really think that we need to have some money that's available that we can use for those unforeseen emergencies. And that's what we came up with. Um, that 500,000, whether or not it gets, it goes to the reserve fund will be decided by the taxpayers. It's not something that we as a board just make that decision. Um, it's a separate article that is on the, um, the ballot for the voters to weigh in on. One discussion we did have is that in the event that that transfer to the reserve fund is approved, but the budget isn't, it's not, you know, that 500,000 still goes. So it's not like you can put that back to try to rework numbers in the budget. So that's out, but we're willing to take that chance. Um, you know, as we've heard numerous times, there's a lot of deferred maintenance that really needs to move from the deferred list to the we're working on it list. And 500,000 is a very small percentage of the 18 million, but it's, it's someplace we got to start. And the numbers that it produced, um, you know, if it wasn't for the drop in the CLAs, we would be really, really well off as far as effects to the taxpayers. Um, if the, the budget going up would have had, because of the addition of all of our long-term weighted students, uh, population, we would have seen some really positive budget numbers. Um, however, the fact that the CLAs took such a big drop, um, until the towns reappraised, that's going to affect us to some degree. That, that's a, that's a very probable scenario. Um, articles tend to pass and budgets tend to not pass.
Mm-hmm.
So. Um. Yeah, so that's kind of where the finance committee has been. We will be looking for final approval by the whole board of the budget at our next meeting. Um, we had initially at our last meetings, we had talked about potentially doing that. At this meeting, however, the numbers keep changing from the state. Cheryl had updated numbers, you know, just before the start of the meeting tonight. Cheryl had updated numbers, you know, just before the start of the meeting tonight. And so we wanted to wait the additional two weeks. It still gives us time to warn the budget and see if any numbers do change. With the values that the tax commissioner is recommending, I think there's going to be a lot of districts that might be in trouble. You know, as far as they're going to see some really big increases in their, in their taxes. So whether the legislature tries to fix that, I don't know. You know, usually the final approval of the yield is something that happens in the last week of the legislative session. And that's long after we've gone to vote for our initial round with the budget. Hopefully, you know, I would, I would really love to, to hope that we only have to go vote once. So we'll see what happens. Any questions?
So just to follow up on the transfer to the reserve fund, the actual line item in the budget for building maintenance, has that remained unchanged?
No.
Plus five hundred thousand.
Plus five hundred thousand.
As well as a transfer to capital projects.
Good.
Anything else?
So what do we do on the twenty-second if we decide that we don't like the budget when we're doing our first budget talk on the twenty-fourth?
Well, we kind of have to make a decision that night because the warning has to be approved.
Yeah.
I guess if anything changes dramatically over the next week to ten days, I, I think the finance committee is ready to, to meet again, to reassess the numbers. But barring any dramatic change, you know, we're recommending column number four. And yeah, that would be what we would expect to approve on that night, two weeks of the night.
Well, we could, you know, those other columns are possibilities as well. If, you know, if the numbers are really changed, we, you know, we've got those four menu items, you know, all, all ready to go.
Yeah, I mean, that's the thing is if something really goes, goes back, we wanted the ability to be able to reconvene and look at all of the numbers again before we brought the final version to the whole board for approval.
You know, Slate Valley, we are, the change in the weighting really has provided an advantage for our district. But I think we've been really thoughtful about what we're doing and the increases that we're making considering that. I think that's, you know, there's a lot in the news about districts and how they're being affected by that change in the weighting due to Act one twenty-seven. And there are, you know, there's caps in increases and things like that, but we're not running into that. We're, we're below all those. And we've been very thoughtful about the things that were, where we're making increases in our budget.
But we do have to be really diligent about how we communicate to our taxpayers and, and people that are going to be voting to make sure that, you know, we have a good rationale for the reason why this is going to be three million dollars more than last year's budget. Just about.
Professor Benson, Patty, I'm ready to hear you. Are you ready to explain how Benson's property taxes are going up twenty-five point two hundred percent? That's a big number.
No.
Well, you know, if your CLA, if you don't, if you don't-
Well, I think about it, Cheryl.
CLA, that's, that's part of the problem, like-
Benson had the largest change in CLA. You can actually, I mean, I, I have done it. I haven't, I looked quickly to see if I could find it. It is out there on the state of Vermont's website. You can actually see the properties that were used determining the CLA. We actually see, you know, this property, this parcel sold for this. I think it tells you what it sold for and what it was raised for.
And that would be very helpful.
Could be contributing to this problem, if you doubt it, right?
Pardon me?
I said, you two could be contributing.
I thought that's why you asked the question.
Benson last appraised in two thousand and eleven.
Yeah. You know, appraisals that are over ten years, I mean, that's- Yeah, yeah. I mean, appraisal should be done at least once every ten years.
Yeah, it's really, there's just been, because of the whole pandemic and all of a sudden, all the, you know, everything changed. So many towns need reappraisal. I think they just can't keep up with it.
I appreciate that, but I'm saying that it's more than, it's fourteen years.
Yeah, exactly.
It hasn't just been-
So it's not, right, you can't blame it all on, you know, what's happened in the last four years, so.
But they may not have, you know, they may not have been below eighty-five percent. You know, there's a cost to reappraise and all of that. So those are decisions that towns and listeners have to make.
Yeah, just the heat turning on.
We deal with the-
Going through the wall.
The pipes.
Cheryl, and this is one of those questions. I mean, I know in past years, we've kind of had a number in the back of our mind. But what? How, what's the expense or what would be, say, budget cuts that would be required to change the tax rate one cent? Do you have that number?
I know. I should by now because you asked me that.
Every year. You and I were playing with like the numbers to even get like Benson down to fourteen percent on Friday.
Right.
We had to cut over two million dollars to the budget. So like, it's-
It's a huge-
I mean, it would be huge, drastic cuts. I mean, there's no way to get a tax decrease.
No, I, I know we're not going to see a tax decrease, but I can see that coming up as a question during the listening tours.
Well, because the, the most of the, the budget is the salaries of the employees. And because of the increases that they got in the cost of insurance and giving all the people the added benefits that they got this past year, that's, that's what the cost is.
So, so more on the budget in two weeks. All right, anything else? Finance related?
Okay, so we are now moving on to, in addition to the agenda where I just wanted to briefly discuss expected school board vacancies. Some people were not here at the previous meeting, but we kind of did a roll call. Patty and Peter had mentioned that they were running again from Benson and Orville. Tony mentioned she's retiring. Tony spoke on your behalf, Christine. You are not running again in Hubbardton. Tara, you are not running again at Fairhaven. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the potential exists to have a few vacancies.
Well, we saw three open in West Haven.
And then, of course, West Haven, we don't have anyone. But I just didn't know if the board was okay. If we had maybe Lisa Cacciatore put out a little social media advertisement, trying to see if there's anyone out there who might be interested in, in running for one of these open seats. I did reach out to the principals if they had any suggestions or leads. And I got a few, a few leads back that I'm going to follow up on, so thank you for doing that. I guess one question I have, maybe you know, Julie, you have to get ten percent of your registered voters signing a petition.
No, it's one percent.
A one percent?
It's one percent. Because it's only twenty-nine people in Castleton.
Yeah, okay, so two thousand nine hundred. Okay, so one-
Ten people in Benson.
One percent. So one percent of registered voters, you need to have sign your petition to get on the ballot.
Correct.
You pick up that petition from the town clerk of your town.
Correct.
And that is due in sometime-
Twenty-eighth usually, I think, like-
No, that was a misprint. When I went to pick mine up the other day, it's not the eighteenth.
Okay.
I thought it was the twenty-eighth. Yeah, I think you're correct.
I think it was the-
Okay, okay.
Because mine says it's got to be someplace by eighteen.
Because I asked her specifically and she, she looked up the calendar for me.
Yeah, Mike's the twenty-eighth moderator in Castleton.
You can go to the town, what's called the league, which stays in towns, they have a calendar.
So again, just talk to people in your community, friends, family members, other parents, people who might be interested in, in running. Just give them the guidance they need to get those petitions.
Stand at the dump, find your local village store or whatever. It doesn't take much, really, honestly.
Yeah, twenty-nine is a law in Castleton versus N.
I got that at the, Mike got all that at the fire banquet.
I think it's like three in West Haven.
And they have to be people from your town.
They have to be registered voters.
From your town.
From your town.
But yet, when you get voted in, everyone in the district-
That's right.
Votes.
Yes.
All right, so that's it. Any other questions or comments about the upcoming petitions and essential vacancies? All right, so we-
Can I just, I'm sorry, just one quick question.
I'm sorry, you have your chance.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I miss that? Well, just because you were talking about, you know, when you just said, how are you going to convince your voters that, you know, your, your property taxes are going up twenty-six percent? So Cheryl, what Glenn was saying about the cost of, how did you say it? One dollar, what is one?
How many dollars to change the tax rate by one cent?
Thank you. How many dollars does it take of our budget to decrease basically by one cent?
I mean, I was kind of looking at if you look at that equalized tax rate line and you look at for each of the scenarios, so scenario one-
I was looking at that too.
Scenario three is basically two cents, let's say. Scenario four is basically ten cents. And scenario four is basically five cents.
Less than, right.
More or less.
Pretty close to that. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So four is the point zero three two two.
Right. Yep. Three point two two.
Three point two two. Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we're now at the second public comment. Is there anyone here in person with a public comment? Or anyone online who has a public comment? All right. All right, so executive session, we do have a need for a very brief executive session for a legal matter. It would just be Brooke, you're the only person joining us.
Does it involve me?
I remember.
It does, Kurt.
Should I recuse?
Are you asking me?
Yeah.
I don't believe it's necessary.
Okay.
Executive session for legal matter with just Brooke?
Second.
All those in favor?
It's you and Brooke. Have a great time. Bye.
All those in favor of going into executive session, please say aye.
Bye.